...help direct the council of county.
Hello, Chairman.
Connie Orr, Vice Chair of Crane County Commissioners.
Gary Blevins. County.
On the move.
And still hungry.
Yeah, they're funny for this.
Jake Johnson, Vice Chair of Hope County.
And probably the youngest county commissioner in the state right now.
Yeah.
You're a brave soul.
Sarah Satella, County Relations Representative, Central Region.
Good evening, everyone. Presented to push, Chief Operating Officer of Vaya Health.
Jerry, you want to introduce yourself?
Jerry Rice, video man.
Jerry's in a lot of our meetings. He says that public meetings should be public.
He's in all of our meetings.
If you don't know Jerry, get used to him. He's around.
Hey, Kay. I'm the administrative support for county relations representatives, Brian, Shelley, and Sarah, and I'm the admin support for this group.
Well, good. Brian's on a state conference call right now, so I guess we'll go in and start with Christina and let you go over the -- oh, we got to approve the minutes.
Yes.
The minutes from the last meeting are in your packet, and if you look over them briefly and someone wants to make a motion to approve them, I'm going to take the motion.
And I would say we typically send them out in advance, but I had a catastrophic computer crash yesterday, and it took us very late in the day to get them back and ready, so.
And I wasn't at the last meeting, so I can confirm that.
My turn, mate.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, now we can move right on to Christina.
Sure. So, good evening again, everyone. I'm going to start a conversation. Brian, we are very excited that you are here this evening. This is a very, very important meeting, as all of our meetings are, but there's been a lot of thought, and I want to try to save some of the comments because I know Brian will join us as quickly as he can here in the next few minutes. As you probably well know from a county perspective, there's a tremendous amount of things going on. This is always in North Carolina, our long session, our people are building the Biennial budget that all of us are probably most likely in some way or another going to be affected for, and probably like all of you and all of us, we are fighting for every penny we can to serve the people who are most vulnerable in our communities. So, I'm going to sort of start at a high level. In your packet, mine was on the left, there's a document about a public hearing. I'm just going to talk about that for a few minutes. It says, "North Carolina Medicaid and NC Health Choice Transformation Request for Public Input." And even though this, there was a meeting here last Friday in Buncombe County for Western North Carolina from the Department of Health and Human Services, I just want to start here, and this will probably set up some of the more detailed things that Brian will talk about. And so, you know, we had some of our staff went and many, I think some of y'all went, right? You might get some comments in a few minutes. So, but the reason I bring this up is, is that this was a very, many, like many of you have been in the system a very, very long time. This public input in regard to the changes in North Carolina in regard to the behavioral health and IDB system, I said, I actually was in with the secretary last Thursday before the Friday that someone came out for the public input meeting, and what I told her was that in all my years, usually a notice comes out when the Department of Health and Human Services comes out to your region, they invite people, let you know what they're going to talk about. I had never seen one this many pages long. And she laughed, and she said, "Well, what does that tell you?" And I said, "Well, one thing it tells you very seriously. One thing, there's a very serious intent of what you were wanting to talk to us about." And if you look at this handout either tonight or in the future, what you would see is a huge set of questions. The Secretary of Department of Health and Human Services is really laying out the vision for North Carolina, and they've had really, I think, really good participation as they've done these three, I guess it was four, public meetings to really see what the public had to say. And if you look at the first page, you really see the feedback that they're looking at. For many of you who either, hopefully through Vaya and different venues, you've heard us talk about our system and the medical healthcare system, your hospital system, primary care, we are really nationally on a huge movement around whole-person care, integrated collaborative care. As you well know, this system has been treating people's psychiatric and disability and challenges issues for many, many years. But what we know is, and we know this for a fact from the medical community, we also know it based on our own data here at Vaya, is that the people we are serving have the same top health conditions that you and I do. It doesn't matter if you have schizophrenia, autism, developmental disabilities of some other type, or major depression or anxiety. The people in those groups of people that we serve have the same amount of blood pressure, heart disease, diabetes, and anything else that we are experiencing, and they are just part of the population in regard to health matters. We have not been a good system, even though we care tremendously about people. We have not been a good system in really ensuring that the whole person is being treated. And with it being 2017, and you look across the country, many other states have been very progressive in really trying to bring a system together. Here at Vaya, we have been working on this now for several years. We are, it's beginning to be part of our signature. We have great relationships with pretty much all our hospitals, anybody that's running the primary care practices across our 23 counties. Me, I mean, this week alone, I've had two seven o'clock meetings with primary care physicians who were wanting to understand more about our population, and how do we build a culture together to really treat people. So, and to be honest, what I feel like in my career, and maybe in some of your careers, is that you want, I don't want anything different for a person with a disability than I want for myself. And there really shouldn't be any difference. It's all about being equal and fair. And they should have the same right to healthcare as I have. And of course, we know that in this country today, that is a huge challenge because it's based on payment. On the adult side of our system for mental health and substance use, we served over 23,000 people last year who were uninsured or underinsured. And that's a small number for the people that live in Western North Carolina, as you see in your communities. And I'm sure you hear from your hospital systems of how many people show up on any given day who are just uninsured and unable to pay. And, you know, you have to give a tremendous amount of credit to Carolina's medical or mission or their life point, or whoever it is running the hospital and primary care system, that they're seeing people. But they're also getting overloaded with people in regard to not only just the EDs that we hear constantly in the system. So, we're really at a point in North Carolina, when we, when we see a public hearing like this, and I would really encourage you just to glance sort of through the questions of what was asked, and, you know, I don't know if any of you, or you heard anything about this, or any of you participated, but we're at a tipping point in the system. We definitely at a tipping point here at Vaya, where you have a system that we went from providing services for somebody who's been around the old mental health centers as they've typically been known for, and at some point in time in the 2000s, they became, they went from being service providers and they became local management entities where we managed the state funding piece of the system. And then we had the opportunity like Vaya did in 2012 to become a managed care organization, which we were given the privilege to manage the Medicaid as well as the state funds. But what we are, what we continue to see, and some of you who have been, many, all of you being good partners with us, and I'm sure you keep up with the news like we do, we continue to see the state funding piece just continuously be chipped away. And so, a piece of what we're here tonight to talk to you about, and hopefully to either validate what you already know, or help educate you about what is really the temperature in Raleigh around what we're doing, what's it looking like for people who are uninsured, the effects of it's going to have on services, and the, really the major concern that we have. I mean, I said to somebody, and I say this about every day somewhere, but in the system, 40 years as a public servant, and I would say in 40 years, this is in the top five of the cuts that are possible to come down to the population that I know all of us in this room are very, very, very concerned about. This is, you know, the poor, the less fortunate, and most of these people haven't been treated in a healthcare system very well, or don't know how to engage in a healthcare system, don't know where to go get help. And so, they have all those medical issues, and then you put on top of their disabilities. And again, I'm not trying to preach to the choir. All you men and women know this population very well, but I think we are, we're coming into the room tonight with you that as what we believe is a partnership of what can be a very united voice in your communities, that we really engage in not only local conversations, regional conversations, but absolutely the element of the room is the political conversation. Each of us have our own circle of influence of where we can go. So, you know, we are really looking to move to a system at Vaya. So, you have the future coming, a whole person, integrated collaborative care. We still today in the Vaya system have all the contracts that are still in place for Medicaid with the Division of Mental Health, and all the requirements. All of us are very used to doing contractual work with the people that pay us to do what we do. But I think what we see is, is those requirements aren't going down, the need is, as you see probably in your own communities, people are just coming out of the woodwork. We still continue to see a large percentage of people that has still never been seen in the system, and that's across children, adolescents, and adults. And then for all of you, I understand, and we have a very close relationship with the folks at the North Carolina County Commissioner Association, that I think you've had your sort of district meetings, you've gotten your box from what I've understood, and you, we all see the epidemic with opioids. And it's, you know, it's chronic, it's epidemic, it's flooding the system. And so, again, we, I could probably just go on and on of how many things that we all share together tonight as far as the people we serve in any of your communities and what you're doing about it. So, our concern tonight is to really, I definitely want you to be as educated as you can be. I know several of you, and I know the staff, the regional staff have worked really hard to encourage you to come, and I know several of you have said, "Try to be specific. Tell me exactly. Educate me. Help me understand what we can really do, and we need to move forward on that." So, let me just stop there and just maybe take just a few minutes to kind of get a feel of what you're seeing in your communities as far as the people I'm talking about. Am I right? Are we wrong? Do we say I have the same perspective?
Our largest problem is, is the opioid addiction and care, primarily the care there is the jail and the emergency rooms and the hospitals. Now, we have seen a bit of improvements along the way, and we're certainly looking for more, but that is, that's the biggest challenge, and we have a great campaign.
When you talk about your slide improvements, I'm just curious, what is that, what do you observe?
Using a different hospital.
Using a different hospital.
Using a different hospital that doesn't do the MRI, the CAT scan, and all these tests, just when we bring an inmate in.
So, others? Are we on base?
Well, we have the crisis intervention training that all of our officers have done in our county, our sheriff's deputies have done. I haven't gotten the jail, the prison guards to do it yet, but with half the prison population having mental health issues of one kind or another, to me, that's something that I think should be a training that we can do too. But it's a 40-hour training or something, I believe, so it takes time. But that's really helped. And then working closely with our mental health provider, Daymark in our area, to have them on site with the sheriffs when they need to, and a lot of just de-escalating different mental health issues for we people.
Do you all do their training, or is it done by the local sheriff's department?
I think Vaya does it for, but I would, I mean, we had our captain, who told me when I first asked him a few years ago, and he said he didn't believe in it, but now he believes in it, and he wants everybody, all the deputies to have it. So, that was encouraging to me, to see somebody who was like, "Oh, no, I don't matter." But now that, and when you look at the calls, about half of ours, of our sheriff's logs have some mental health issues, whether it's substance use or domestic stuff, so.
I do know that the NCACC has put together or are completing packages for us to do training with our elected officials, the sheriff's department, the school, all the medical people that we have in the county. We don't have, we don't have a hospital, and only one clinic that closes at 5:00 at this time. Of course, we're working toward getting an urgent care and a dialysis center, but it's very limited inside the county, so, and that would be why we are taking our inmates to other counties. But I know that there is a package coming down where we will have some training, but I'd like to talk to you all who do this training too. Thank you.
I think the opioid, the opioid in a box meeting training from the association. It went from a box to a package.
Has anybody else seen that, that presentation that Brian did, a couple of me at our retreat on the opioids stuff? That was a really neat presentation he did. And he said, "I meant to ask him. He's got it on." I mean, I think he could share it. And, but it, little things like 80% of the heroin addicts started with prescription pills. And, you know, you have to overcome this stigma of why do these, why this epidemic's so strong right now. And I was just reading the other day that sometimes when people get to prison, it's the first time they have health care or a house. So, you look at other issues, why they're coming, why they're ending up at jail, and it's not just because they have made bad decisions. So, to me, we have to look at the systemic issues too. And, and all of us being fairly small counties, except for maybe Buncombe, but do have to maximize our resources, is what I find. That we've got, we can't recreate center after center. We've got to make sure that we're networking together to maximize the staff that we do have.
We coordinate a lot of the questions we have too. Ronnie Bill in Macon County, and he's a huge help to us.
Yes.
Just since it's a topic, we did put in your packets a list of the folks from the, or the Vaya catchment area who attended, it's called a Stepping Up Initiative Conference. The state of North Carolina is working very hard to promote a Stepping Up Initiative, which is basically working with local communities to begin looking at what resources are available in their community, what services are available in their community, and then trying to develop processes and programs to help keep people who need treatment from going to incarceration, catching those folks who, within a certain criteria, are coming into contact with the criminal justice system. Buncombe County was there. They did a wonderful job in presenting at the conference. We had multiple other communities come, and Connie, I don't think--
Ashique Jalen was there?
He was there. He may not be on the list. This was the registration list, so I'll make sure to get him on if he isn't. So, one of the things we will be doing is trying to follow up with you to see if your community is interested, how can we make sure you have the toolkit, you have the resources, that we're trying to do it in a consistent manner as far as looking at what's already happening, and how we can try to keep people out of detention centers before they get there. Yeah, thank you for inviting him. And you passed the resolution. Some of the counties have, and we'll be talking about that.
Are you ready?
Poor Brian. Wait, let it, take the bread. Brian's been driving, meeting and driving all day, so.
Well, are we just hopping right into the single stream?
Well, however you want to do. I just, I want to commend Brian for all the work he's put in and the time in this transition. It's been a transition, Rick, since as long as I've been on this board, so thank you.
Yeah, well--
Now it's your turn.
Yeah, well, the, I mean, let's step way back here. The state budget's always a big roller coaster, you know, and you can go there, and I just got back this, a couple hours ago, and, you know, you kind of get the latest version of where things are. And of course, when the Senate releases their version of the budget, it gets some things in there that were, you know, and that are just very, very alarming. And I think there's a, there's a couple of pieces to that. One, that it was inconsistent in relationship to what I would say are certain promises that were made about, and even in budget language, that, you know, cuts were not going to be recurring, that became recurring. And, you know, the, the nature of these reductions in single stream, and I'll explain the mechanics around this in a little bit, are, you know, pose significant risk to consumers and families. I mean, they're, they're the citizens in your counties. I mean, they're the people you know, that you see at the grocery store, that are our members, not about money for us. It's kind of like county funds. You know, that money isn't, you know, money for us. It's money that we spend on services for individuals that don't have Medicaid. And we have a real, you know, we're kind of in this, you can't have it both ways situation in North Carolina. And again, this isn't, this is a policy discussion. It's not a political one. You know, we've chosen to not expand Medicaid, okay? So, the consequences of that are that there are an enormous number of people that need care that don't have Medicaid, right? I mean, this is just factually correct. So, when we further, we already don't have enough money for those folks to receive services. So, why are people in the emergency department? Why are people in jails that shouldn't be? We have the system that's been financed. And again, I'm not being judgmental about that. I'm being factual about it. These are not things that should be surprising to people. They're alarming. They're unpleasant. You could argue they're unfortunate, but they're just the reality of what has been financed. Now, to further reduce funding to that population, and to take money off the table, so to speak, and require us to backfill it, is, you know, from a policy perspective, I don't, I don't get it. I just don't get it. You know, you go to Raleigh, people are running around talking about the opioid crisis, and the hospital emergency departments and this and that. The very population you're talking about, you're taking money away. You're taking money away. So, again, from a policy perspective, it's really hard to understand what the connection between policy and budget is with this, okay? Let me explain a little bit how, what the mechanics of this are, and then we can kind of drill it down into some specifics. Single stream money, and this goes back, I don't know, maybe it was a couple of years ago when we did a, let's swing around here, a little bit of a primer on how financing in our system works. And essentially, what we do is pool the funding that we get in, pretty much from your counties, the millions of effort funding, and what's called single stream funding. And it's called single stream because somebody got a great idea almost 15 years ago, that the more generic they made the funding for services, that it was better than making it categorical. I mean, and it's the same thing you guys face, you know, ladies face in your, in your budgets. You know, when things get super categorical, it's, you know, it might make people feel good for a specific thing, but often it's a lot better in our world because we understand the needs of communities better to just have it be money that can be used for whatever the needs are. So, that's what single stream funding is, and that comes from the state. And then there's also some block grant funding. All of that goes into a pool that we use for individuals that don't have Medicaid. And, you know, you've probably seen the, when I have this laminated and carried around, the bar chart that shows, you know, the enormous number of people that we just don't have the money to serve. So, what the General Assembly did was say, "Well, we're going to reduce that funding." And for us, in the next two years, there's two ways to calculate this. They also did another, I guess we can't really call it a reduction, but they're also requiring us to pay the state share of the risk reserve, so it just adds another bill portion, I'd say. So, the two-year cumulative reduction is 16.3 million or 18 million, okay? So, what they're saying is, we're not going to supply that money. You take your fund balance, another term that's grossly misunderstood and misrepresented, okay, and you fill in for that money that we didn't fund. Now, everybody's smart enough to figure out, that's a cut, right? That takes money off the table. Now, that money that they're not putting into services for individuals that don't have Medicaid, that doesn't, that isn't being used for something else in our system. You know, our folks aren't benefiting from that. I don't know where that money goes. It just goes into the state budget somehow. Well, here's the problem. Our fund, there's fund balance and there's available cash. The nature of our business is that we have a lot of requirements around how much money is actually available to be used versus money that's part of our general fund balance that is required to be there for accounting purposes, for risk reserve, for all kinds of things. It's just in the lockbox. Yeah, it's a big number. We're a $420 million insurance company at risk, okay? So, our necks are way sticking out on this. So, the money is big. Maybe, and I don't, you know, and again, I'm really at a disadvantage. I just came screeching in here. And we may have a sheet that explains, that kind of breaks apart the fund balance and what's available, but there's a very small amount of cash that's actually available to us that we have been using for reinvestment projects. And many of you, if you've seen the mental health kiosks in your communities, the facility-based crisis in Caldwell County, here in Buncombe County, C3 at 356, Donald could rattle off 10 or 15 more things that we've done. That's what we've been using our reinvestment funds for. So, we have to, in order to try to fill these gaps, we have to stop doing those things, and in fact, we're going to have to retract on some of those things. So, not only are we not going to do things in the future, we're going to have to stop doing some of the things we started doing, okay? That's how significant these reductions are going to be. And because they're recurring cuts, I mean, it's just, it just compounds it. It's just a disaster. And again, disaster for me and this organization? Yeah, at some point, it is us because of the small amount of administrative. It's a disaster for people that need services that don't have Medicaid. Don't make any, there's no if ands or buts about it. These are your citizens, okay? We have the responsibility to try to offer some care to them. We cannot do it, okay? Bottom line is the money that's going to be taken away will reduce services to what you could argue to be the most vulnerable people in our communities.
Brian--
So, what gets, you know, what gets done about all of that, I guess, is up to us. You know, the House is hoping to have their budget back to the Senate probably within a couple of weeks. You know, their goal is to have, you know, well, end up having a conference committee, and the goal being to have a budget to the governor by June 15. So, you know, we have a, we don't have a lot of time theoretically. Charlie?
I was going to say, just to put in perspective, remind people, I know you mentioned they were recurring. The last two-year budget cycle, we had, what, 30, over 30, 30 million taken out, 35?
262 million statewide.
Statewide. And then the two-year budget before that, we had, I mean, every year is becoming, you know, the reductions, reductions, reductions. So, it has, it's eaten away at the fund balance that was in the service sector. And then for other folks, maybe just help them understand a little bit, if you're relatively new, the difference between having a Medicaid, you know, the Medicaid consumer versus the indigent consumer, and what, what we do for, the health plans we have for either.
Yeah, they're very, very different. You know, because we have so much less money with the non-Medicates out of the house. I mean, it's pretty bad when you talk about the haves are the people that have Medicaid, and the have-nots are the people that have nothing. And, you know, the populations of people who need services in our catchment area are roughly the same. The non-Medicate population in need is a little bit less, but the amount of dollars is, you know, a fifth what we have in the Medicaid side of the house. So, you know, are there people that, you know, are on waiting lists or can't be served? You have thousands of them. I'm assuring you that that is accurate, okay? And again, nobody should be surprised about that. That's what's been financed. This makes it worse. So, one of the things, and I'm sorry Ronnie's not here tonight. I did have a chance to speak with him a couple times this week, and you know how active, you know, he is in county business, is, you know, one of the things we would like to propose is getting a resolution from this group, you know, which is recognize as the advisory board, you know, for our 23-county region that, and I think there's-- A colleague of mine in the east-- And a colleague of mine in the east, Trillium, is 26 counties, and they've actually gotten 23 out of their 26 counties individually to submit resolutions to the County Commissioners Association. So there's a pretty good pile getting started there. It would be great if you, you know, if you wanted to go back and do that at your county, okay, and there's a county version of it. And then really, the county commissioner advisory board version, had a header like that on it. It would be, well, my request of you is that you would sufficiently care enough about this this evening to pass a resolution like that. So that's kind of, that's kind of the gist of it. What I did was, I had a chance to speak with a couple of our bigger providers who would probably bear the brunt of these reductions, and kind of give them the quick rundown on things. And they agreed to be on the phone this evening at 6:45 and just, I mean, you hear from them. And I mean, you're getting my view of the world. These are the providers, Daymart and RHA, that are in your communities that employ people who wouldn't have jobs, and serve the people who need the care. So you can hear the view from the street, from these folks, about the types of services. You know, generally speaking, I don't know if Donald, you know, he is, you know, very conversant about these services, so I might want to refer to him with some of these. But the ADVIP programs that I know in many communities are, you know, critical to folks because they allow family members to go to work and not have to care for their loved ones. Kind of a date program, work program, that would be high on the list of a program we probably have to make reductions in. And again, it's because of the lack of Medicaid funding for these services. Residential services, assisted family living, group homes. And, you know, I hope it doesn't come to the point where we're throwing people out of their houses. Yeah, that'd be pretty, pretty, pretty bad. Reductions to behavioral health urgent care, and again, we have C3 at 356 right over here. We have people from other states coming to where that. I mean, the secretary came down for the ribbon cutting, and it's a showpiece. A fantastic service for folks. We just did the ribbon cutting in Caldwell. You know, there's probably over 2 million bucks, isn't there Donald, in non-Medicaid funds there that, again, I mean, we have to make peace with this somehow. And, you know, as much as, and I spoke with Ira about this, and I appreciate that, you know, could you go out of here tonight and we tell you the dollar amount for each one of these programs that they're going to be cut, and how many people and all of that? No, we can't. You know, number one, we haven't done our budget yet with our board. And we'll be doing a draft of that next Thursday evening. And we're still waiting to see. But, you know, we can't ignore the threat, I guess. That would be a real mistake. Facility-based crisis again, Caldwell, reductions in assertive community treatment teams. And these are, it's a very valuable outpatient service. It's a very rich type of care that people receive in the community to maintain them in the community rather than, you know, reverting to inpatient and substance abuse services. Again, all the stuff about opioids. Big problem we had with delivering substance abuse services is the lack of Medicaid. A lot of people that need that level of care don't have Medicaid, period. And all you have to do is look at the experience in other states that did expansion. The number one population that benefits from new Medicaid entitlement is substance abuse. Just located all over the country. So, are you getting the picture?
And I hate to say this, but when we were preparing this today, this is not a complete list. So this is to give you a sampling of some of the, sort of the highest level services that you may know about, but we are working on a list that would be more complete as Brian said, as more information becomes available.
And to add a little comment to Brian, one of the issues with the lack of funding is it's going to impact our intellectual development on disability first. And we talk about group homes, and we talk about ADVIP. That's not by choice. The state has to have so much state dollars in the system in order to match federal block grant dollars. And those are generally on the substance abuse side and the mental health side. There's no IED block grant. So for us, if we have to keep a certain amount of state dollars in our system for that match, we have to go after services to intellectual development disabilities first in those cuts, before we can go after some of those other cuts. So there's significant impact on those populations and the families. And when you look at how much money we're committing to that, you know, it pulls the majority of the funds that we're currently using to support those families out of the system.
Yeah, I'm glad that Donald mentioned it. It's just sort of the way the money works for the state and the federal government around those block grants and the requirement to be matching. So again, big picture, state says, no, we're not going to provide the money. LME, MCOs, you make it up, except that in part, that money's already committed to other things in our fund balance projects, either in an existing fashion or planned to be something. So we have to try to shuffle all of that around, take it out of where it was, take it away from what it was planned for, and put it into the hole that the state left. It's supplantation, which in the Medicaid world, you know, would probably pass the test, but, you know, who am I to say? So you're reducing state funds as being supplanted with Medicaid savings that's generated as part of a Medicaid managed care program? That's the high level.
I'm just, it seems like a lot of counties are going to be hurt by these cuts.
All across the state.
Every single 100 counties are going to get hurt.
What, I'm trying to figure out what the motivation is. Who's pushing these cuts? And, I mean, I understand sometimes we have the urban counties versus the rural counties, but we're all going to suffer on this. And who's, I know it's a capitated system. Are they setting it up to show what it would be like once they turn it over to private insurance and profits taken out? Or, I mean, is this just covering their own budget? Or, I mean, who's on board with this?
Well, this is the state's budgeting, okay? And I can't answer the question, you know, so when you're a state legislator and you're doing something and you realize it's going to hurt your counties, I mean, I can't answer that question. But I can tell you that the legislators that I've spoken to have made it clear that that will be the case. And that, you know, I don't want to get in conflict with them, but yet, but my responsibility is to advocate, you know, for the citizens that ironically they're advocating for, but I better just stop there.
I didn't mean to get you in trouble there, but thank you.
Somehow it gets disconnected. But it's the state's budgeting process. And what they say is, well, we started off with a flat budget. Okay. Well, that flat budget they started off with had a non-recurring cut in the biennium of $262 million. So how does that work? So if you start off with a budget that you're not supposed to go above, that already has a $262 million hole in it? Well, that's their explanation, they can't do anything about it, that the big chairs, you know, decided that that was going to be the starting point. So they're kind of held captive to their process, it's just their hierarchy.
The governor's budget had returned those funds to the budget. So that we, that was a good piece of news for us. And initially, we thought those non-recurring cuts, service reductions, were going to be returned. And it was in the governor's budget he returned the funds. And then now it's, you know, back to where those were reinstated.
Yeah, it's really, the Senate even talks about it as a positive because they returned money. I'm not kidding you. You can read the language in the budget. That they returned, I guess, either 60 or 90 million dollars. Well, they were supposed to return 262 million, but they talk about it as a positive because of the language returned. And again, I'm, you know, I, you know, part of this, I really try to do without judgment. These are just facts. I mean, you determine, you know, how significant it is for your communities. I'm telling you, you know, kind of from our perspective, you know, the types of services that you would have to find a way to reduce.
Brian, one thing that would definitely impact every county, if you're familiar with ACT teams, those are the most severe persistent mentally ill individuals in your community that are being served by these ACTs. Without these teams, these are folks that have multiple hospitalizations. Without these teams, it's been shown that outpatient treatment does not work for those individuals. So those individuals are either in the hospital, in your jails. And these can be, you know, they have small and large teams. These can be 50 to 100 people, that this is really their lifeline, that have therapists, a doctor, and folks that check in with them, some of them daily. That would be a burden on your law enforcement and a lot of other resources in your county.
I'm just curious, who, you know, as county commissioners, we have a duty to advocate somewhat for our constituents. And to me, this is a pretty clear case of, we're going to bear the brunt of this in our counties. And who needs to advocate for these, for this funding? And as representatives on this notebook board, I think it's our duty, and as county commissioners, anybody that sees the long-term, needs to be advocating to get this money done. These resolutions, I was just reading over the resolve, it seems fairly generic enough that I'm expecting our county commissioner, I hope he can pass this generously. But this is, you know.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah, it's Peyton, how are you doing?
Hey Peyton, you might be a couple minutes early. Is anybody else on the call? Hello? Is that Jeannie?
Jeannie there.
Okay. We got, we should have Billy West here in a minute. Just kind of giving folks the rundown, and then I guess we can go through with introductions.
I think we all know each other.
Yeah, you got a, you got a big room full of people here that don't necessarily know all of you, Jeannie.
Oh, sorry.
In that case, we're going to let Jeannie do all the talking.
Wouldn't that ever pop me, right?
Well, let me get things started here a little bit. So this is our, Jeannie and Peyton, and I'll let you introduce yourselves in a moment. You know, this is our county commissioner advisory board meeting, where we have representatives from 23 of our great counties in western North Carolina. And we've been talking a lot about the single-stream reduction. And I've been explaining the interaction of, the actions of the Senate in their budget, and then the requirement that we would use fund balance to fill that reduction as a supplantation of the reduced state funding, and just how that starts to unravel things. And, you know, went through a short list of services that we might have to have some reductions on. Is that Billy?
It's Billy.
Okay. Well, you were, you were last, so I'll tell you what, I'll let you, Billy West from Daymart. And I'll let each of you folks introduce yourselves and talk about maybe the counties that you're in and the range of services you provide. And then we'll go around the table here and let these folks introduce one another, and then we'll get into the impact in a moment. Billy, why don't you go first?
Okay, my name is Billy West from the Daymart Recovery Services. We are in the Alledine, Ash, Avery, Watauga, in Wilkes County area, along with about 20 some other counties in North Carolina. We employ about 332 people in this county. That's about county people that live in this county and work for Daymart in other areas of our country. We provide your basic four services, a walk-in clinic, your four services of psychiatry, motor prices, ACT, which is a service for severe physicians with mentally ill people that are unable to make it to traditional therapy. We tip them home to children. I would say any type of state cut from outside here is going to impact. They're mainly adults, mainly substance users, and folks that really have no ropes to go with. One reason our walk-in clinic do so much business is there is this need for it to go. There's private providers, private healthcare providers, offering accepted patients for something that's simple, that's routine and antidepressants, given in. But I'll stop there, and for the micros, so to speak.
Hey Billy, Jeannie and Peyton, why don't you introduce yourselves?
Go ahead Peyton, I'll fill out that.
You go ahead, please.
Well, I'm Jeannie Duncan, I'm the president of our HSA. We are state-wide provider of both behavioral health services and the largest IDB provider in the state. We are a comprehensive provider in the Bay area of Buncombe, Mitchell, Madison, Nancy, McDowell, Lenore, I mean Caldwell, and Alledine counties, and as well as, we also provide motor prices in additional three other counties. So, we also have IDB services in the Bay area region that are in San Jose County, Henderson County, Buncombe County, in Ash, Watauga, and Wilkes County, with all the presentations and I see other large businesses. So we're a pretty large provider in the Bay area region. So we combine both of those types of services. We provide the mental health services that Bill is kind of enhumoring in addition to the four AIVI BBS services as well. We are, we are the ones who operate the 356 places, and we just open the FPT in Caldwell.
Go ahead Peyton.
Good leading folks. I am Peyton Maynard. I am the president of the Developmental Disabilities Facilities Association, which is a professional association for the CEOs and owners of the larger companies in the state that provide intermediate care facility operations and mental health operations for clients across the state of North Carolina. We have about six members, they're the larger companies. I live in Raleigh, North Carolina, and work out of Raleigh, North Carolina. I spend a lot of time in the legislature and with politicians, attempting to help them better understand what our companies do and better understand what our customers, your LME, MCO, do. And we're very hard to try to improve the situation for both service provision companies and for the LME CEOs in halls of the legislature.
And he does a good job of that. Let me ask everybody, if you just press the button, it should turn green. And maybe we just go around the table real quickly, and you can introduce yourselves so you get an idea of the representation we have here this evening. Billy?
Billy Kennedy, Vice Chairman of Watauga County Commission.
Billy Kennedy, Vice Chairman of LaToga County Commission, discreet, and Board, Bay Board Member, and Chair of the Performance Equality Committee, and as County Commissioner Advisory Board, sorry.
It's not breathing, let me push it again, it should go. Hey, I'm Brownie Newman, I'm the Chairman of the Beaune County Commission.
Brian McManaman, Chairman of the Jackson County Commission.
Don Adams, Jackson County Manager.
Ira Dove, Haywood County Manager and Bay Health Board Member.
Ronnie Reese, Alexander County Commissioner.
Rick French, Alexander County Manager and Bay Board Chair.
Nathan Benning, Gates County Manager.
Stan Kassler, Caldwell County Manager.
Donald Riz, Provider Network, Bay Health.
Elaine Russell, Health Director, Transylvania County.
Clay Logan, General, Clay County Commissioner.
Connie Orr, Vice Chair of Grand County Commissioners, and thankfully, our representative in the House and in the Senate have both been county commissioners.
Gary Blavens, World County Commissioner.
Jake Johnson, Polk County Vice Chair.
Tracy Hayes, Bay Health General Counsel.
Sarah Spatella, County Relations Representative, Central Region.
Good evening, everyone, this is Christina.
Okay, and you know me. So, what we have done, Billy, Jeannie, and Peyton, is, you know, I've explained at the macro level how the, what the relationship is between our single-stream funding, county maintenance of effort, and block grants, and how that is essentially a pool of funding that we use for the non-Medicaid folks, and then how, what the mechanics are of the single-stream reductions that the Senate made, which would require us to move money from fund balance that is either already committed to projects, so then we'd have to back it out, or money that's already planned to be used for services, we'd have to back that out. And any way you cut it is going to result in some sort of reduction in care. And, you know, not to get too far down the road on this, but, you know, we would have to do that in a way that is consistent with the way that the budget language is written about service utilization. But, long story short, we listed the following services as those that would be, unfortunately, you know, targeted for some degree of reduction. We have not done a budget yet. Next Thursday evening is our board meeting, where we will be presenting our budget, and I did warn the folks here that, and I'm sure they're well aware, that the state budget process is a big roller coaster, and there's a lot of ups and downs, but these, the threat of these reductions is so significant that, you know, part of my job, a big part of it is education to the community and to stakeholders, so I guess I'm effectively drawing people's attention to a very significant threat for their citizens and our members. And I thought it would be good for them to be able to hear from you a little bit more about these services and the impact that there would be in counties around this. Again, not saying that we know the exact amounts in the areas, but it would be within this sector. Those services, and there's not a, and Jeannie, I don't think you guys do any ADV, do you?
Yes, we do that as well.
Oh, okay.
Also, we presented, you see your tax about, you know, the state, the legal and the budget, and asked about to go back and collect some information, and wanted to know if they provided others. So I looked back, and we got about two-hundred-and-seventy-seven individuals in ADV, possibly saved what would be impacted by a cut in the ADV services.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't know if you guys did that or not. Let me, let me read them off. ADV, and Jeannie can talk a little bit more about what that is, and again, it's a, you know, day support program for IDB folks, assisted family living, you know, residential services, and again, that's for IDB. And Donald did explain the, sort of the cruelness of the way the block grants work, where the state is required to maintain a certain maintenance of effort on the mental health and substance use side, so inadvertently, that would put more emphasis on reductions to the IDB population. Behavioral health urgent care, and again, RHA runs that program, C-3 here, just over in Asheville, C-3, three fifty-six, as well as the Caldwell program, facility-based crisis, that's a combination service that goes with that, assertive community treatment team services, I know Daymark does that, probably RHA too, intensive outpatient therapy, substance use, and both of these folks, I'm sure do these, those services. Youth Villages, YV, LifeSet, and I don't think either of them provide that level of care. But that's probably the biggest range of services where we, again, unfortunately, have to figure out how to deal with reductions. Is there some way that each of you could go through and talk about, you know, what this would be like to your agencies, the folks that you employ in these communities, the folks that receive services in these communities, that these representatives have a relationship to? I'll take that as a yes. Go ahead, Billy, you can, you can kick it off, okay?
Yeah, I'm still thinking. I can, I can probably go ahead and start, because I probably have both the most impact. I'm just trying to think in terms of just in the Bay area region, and I don't specifically have those numbers, but we do provide some day support, state funding, in the Nancy County, up in that Bonneville area, as well as Henderson County, and we provide some assisted living, the residential, state-funded residential services in those counties as well, in those Ncys, and Henderson, and Transylvania County. So, you know, some of the individuals that live in those homes, those are actually homes of those counties, but some of those individuals that live in there may come from other counties as well. We do quite a bit of ACT services, we have ACT services in Beaune, we have them down in other first counties, probably have some individuals out of coast as well. And of course, I came to begin to tell you the impact on the urgent care, particularly the three fifty-six project, and how stressful that was then, and, you know, diverting individuals out of the emergency room, and out of the hospital. And we really just have tried to use the Lenore program, the Caldwell County program, open, and in the first week of that program being opened, it actually, the FPC was full within the first week, and, you know, they moved the doors. So, not knowing exactly what we're going to say tonight, I should probably get more specific numbers, but, you know, the IDB services, the day program services that Brian mentioned, that, you know, can also be, so employment services coming out of those programs, and in a lot of cases, if people attend, that's where they have to get, you know, they get their day support services, they, they, a lot of times live with their families, who would then have to, you know, find somewhere else for them to stay during the day if they're, if they're employed, and a lot of our individuals would have elderly parents as well. Most of the individuals receiving the state-funded residential service, that's the only support they get for their living arrangement. And if that service was cut out completely, those individuals would lose their, they would have to close their homes, and they'd lose their, they'd lose their living arrangement. We do a bit of I O T as well, you know, a lot of the I O T programs are state-funded, because individuals aren't eligible for Medicaid for the most part, and with, you know, with a lot of the substance use, you know, the subject on substance use services right now, power is, is need for them, particularly with the urgent crisis, sadly, that other pretty devastating touch to the community.
Any questions for Jeannie or RHA? Peyton, you want to explain things from your side a little bit?
Yeah, we're, we're concerned, I spoke to several members of the House Budget Committee, and Brian, he's a trouble job, he was down here this morning and, you know, working shoulder to shoulder with all of us who are sort of very concerned about all this, so I'm amazed he got back to Asheville and chaired some meetings tonight, but what we're concerned about, because we are statewide, and we cover such a wide range of services, that they're in, we are looking at a little bit for our kind of perspective on this, there are several things that we're really worried about. Number one, we have about thirty-one hundred, there's one-twenty-two C or DDA group homes in the state of North Carolina. If you look at, look at that, that's, say you've got six beds in each one of those group homes, that's about twenty-two thousand people that need a place to live, and those, those homes are funded by state dollars. And so when you start reducing state appropriations, making LMEs go, and burn up their reserves, and run through those to support other things, we're very concerned about the stability of the housing support for folks with development disabilities who are living in the community, or living near their families, or living in a penalty. Secondly, we have worked really hard with Brian and all of the LMEs on the ICFMR group home rings, which we, we did some, some real, sort of heavy-duty analysis of that a few months back, and we're pretty, we're pretty behind the curve on a lot of those rates. Coming through the downturn in the economy and the budget shortfalls that North Carolina was facing, and it just sort of put us behind the curve, and we're very, very concerned that, well, let me back up, the, our LME customers have really responded well when we went and talked to them, the LMEs are responsible for setting rates under the managed care plans that they run, and we, we went out to them, made an appeal with them. Folks have pledged to us to really help us get back up to where we need to be from a rate perspective. And we have plans in place with virtually all the LMEs, and I'm afraid that these types of reductions are really just bringing that to a halt. And our, our biggest cost center in ICF is our personnel, and we, we need to be able to hire and attain good personnel, it's absolutely critical to the safety of the people who live with us, that we have people there that know what they're doing, and know the residents, and understand how they, how they think and how they behave, and can handle that work situation in a very productive and safe way. And we are just, because we do see the statewide perspective, we are, we're very concerned about having to take, or how you reconcile the difference between one-time money, which reserves are always one-time, and be forced to put that into continuing activities, and investments such as your crisis center, and that kind of, that, that type of operation up there. You, I don't know whether you guys know it, but you should be very proud of your crisis center, RHA, and, and Bay had partnered up, that you've got a crisis center operation up there that is just extraordinary, and is diverting a lot of folks from the hospital EDs, which is one of the biggest problems that we're facing in the state of North Carolina, and people showing up at the EDs as opposed to going to an appropriate place where they can get counseling, treatment, services, seventy-two hour observation. You've got one of the models up there, and I've been personally pushing that, it's something that the state ought to invest a lot more money in, because it keeps people out of the ED, and it keeps people, oftentimes keeps them out of longer-term commitment arrangements, which is very, very critical. So, we're extremely concerned that all of this, this innovative stuff, all of the stuff that is desperately needed, and even the basic support of something like housing, is going to be damaged by these, these reductions. And housing is not a very sexy thing, but if you don't have a place to live, there's not a whole lot else that works. And that is sort of the core of what we do, is try to provide good, safe, solid, consistent housing for people, because you can build on that, that living arrangement to achieve a lot of results that you can't if you, if somebody's worried about the roof over their head, and what they're going to have to eat for dinner that night. So those, those are sort of the three, three big issues that we're very concerned about, and that we're expressing to our legislators as vigorously as we can. Is that helpful, Brian?
That's good. Any questions for Peyton? All right, Billy, you want to give us a rundown?
Sure, thank you. I'm going to hag in on everything that's been said so far. You know, just again, we're also a statewide organization, we're just talking about Alene, Ash, Avery, LaToga, and Wilkes. At a macro level, this is nothing more than a cost shift to the county, and I cannot stress that enough, because if this money gets cut, it doesn't cure depression, opioid problems are still going to be there, people are still going to need to go to hospitals, and other systems are going to be impacted. And, you know, we talk a lot about the good work we've done, which are great, particularly with crisis services you just heard about, but let's not talk about the economic impact too. And just giving some rundown, just in the counties we're in, we're talking about three-hundred-and-twenty-two jobs that could be impacted. We're talking about impacting six thousand patients, or perhaps all the patients from last fiscal year, I think it trended a little bit this year. I'm going to give you round numbers, Dr. Drew, we'll examine, if you give me twenty-four hours, and give you your county's exact number. But last year, we saw about fifteen hundred walking, with ninety-five percent of them not going to the emergency room, and that's where they were headed, and meaning they stayed in the county. And let's just say that you stayed in the emergency room one day, well, that's fourteen-hundred bed days in the ER, the sheriff's going to be standing guard. Let's say you stayed there two days, that's twenty-eight hundred bed days. So you've got to keep that in consideration, that's fifteen hundred not there. When you take a look at what it means to the county, Allegheny County, we put top hundred thousand dollars' worth of money directly into Allegheny County, and probably thirty-eight to forty-eight percent of that in the monthly measure should be single-stream money. Ash County, one-point-eight million a year. Avery County, one-point-five million. LaToga County, two-point-two million. All of those, heavy-laden, forty percent plus, is in that stream month. Wilkes County has probably the biggest impact, and has already seen the biggest impact out of it. We put two-point-nine million in Wilkes County. They have a really bad opioid problem. We had slated to have a facility-based crisis there, that would involve thirty-six jobs to the area, additional jobs, full benefit, contributing more county, and excuse me, contributing more state and Medicaid dollars to that community, and we were not able to do it because of pretty good cuts. So they've already lost out, and here we go with another round jeopardizing what's already there. And, you know, on a second, you know, when I hear about the crisis centers, we did not run- run a facility-based crisis in the Vaya area like we do in other areas and like RHA's doing there. And I can't speak for RHA, but I tell you, we have one in that area. It is heavy laden, indigent patients. And that is a program that keeps people out of the hospital, that keeps people alive from the detox, particularly on opioids. If they're treated with some of the more modern drugs, there's a 12%, or at least we've seen in our facilities, 12% less recidivism rate. And you think, well, what's 12%? Well, it ends up being millions of dollars. The other impact that we're seeing just in the Smoky Counties or Vaya Counties, we are also, and this doesn't cost to die, but it's available because of the state dollars. Because the state dollars allow us to have enough staff to see patients, we have been able to pull down federal dollars in these communities called meaningful use stops or the Medicaid stop, that's even outside of the NCOs. And we have been able to look at whole person care, track people's BMI, track people's vitals every time they come in. So when they come in today, they get their vital and their BMI, and a year from now, when they come in for their depression, we give it to them again. And in between that year, we will be talking to them about healthy lifestyle. Just to give you some numbers, we did this, we took vitals over 300,000 times last year, company-wide, for 37,000 Medicaid patients, company-wide. And I don't know how many state patients, I'd have to count that up, probably around 20,000 or 25,000, or maybe less, yeah, probably close to 17,000. And the end result is 10% of those people decreased their BMI during that period of time. It was not a billable code, it was not built to Medicaid, it was not built in the county, it was not built in the state. But what you're talking about is saving off metabolic syndromes, high blood pressures, diabetes, those heart disease, fatty livers, those type things that tend to, you know, when you get to be 40, 50, 60 years old, that your doctor starts talking about your lab work. Our patients that are indigent and our patients that have Medicaid that don't often see the physician as much and eat what's cheaper in foods, tend to suffer those things that are later intensive. And that's in every one of the counties I've mentioned. I don't have the exact numbers, but the percentages of people we were able to decrease their BMI, it is about 10% in Allegheny, Ash, Alec, Avery, Watauga, and Wilkes Counties. Again, no cost, but it takes these state dollars. So what we're doing is we're sitting around and talking about a problem that the state is going to balance their budget. And it's going to be all well and good, it's going to be nice headline in the news and observer, or maybe some people will be against it, but it'll be nice and tidy. The problem is going to happen in our county. It's going to cost our neighbors jobs, it's going to cost the health of our citizens, and it's going to cost the taxing of our law enforcement. It is just that clear and simple to me. You know, what do you want to pay for? Want to pay for annulances and security, or you want to pay for treatment? And that's where, that's really what it comes down to. And I have to make any headway with many of us legislators, but I really think it's going to be the counties that are going to have to say, you know, either spot us the money or don't take the money in the first place. That's all I have, Brian, was the last question.
Well, there you go. You know, the folks that are our members, there's not a lot of affinity for these folks. I guess we all recognize the degree of stigma that exists. We're not going to solve that tonight, but unfortunately, that makes these kinds of issues when it comes to commitment of funding perhaps a little easier. You know, because it isn't, if somebody doesn't jump up and down and say, no, you know, these are not folks that are going to be able to do that for themselves. So that's one that's, that always makes me get up and get out of bed every morning. The people, but for the grace of God, you know, boy, and all of us. And, you know, we have a lot of commitment for the work we do, and it's really based on getting the best outcome that we can with the money that we're given. Education part of my job, I guess that's what I'm fulfilling tonight. This will be real bad for your folks and our folks, so. If you'd like to do something about it, that would be great.
Well, I'm just wondering if of the people here, if y'all have had a chance to glance over this resolution and if anybody has any problem with it, we could address our guest here and ask him specifics. But to me, it seems, well, it seems pretty clear that we need to be doing this. And then ideally, I guess, bring the county one from your individual counties as well because we're going to bear the burden of this one way or the other. And if we don't advocate for these services, then what are we doing here? It's that simple to me. And so if people don't feel comfortable with this, let's discuss it a little bit and see if there's something that could be a different. One thing I saw was that they're changing substance abuse to substance use. It's a kind of a changing terminology right now. So I'd like to see if the substance use, then I talked to the doctor about that, of our chief medical officer, and he explained it to me. So I think it's part of that changing stigma, and it's, y'all have used it, we've got both here, we've got substance use and then later substance abuse. And it's hard to change that, but I think that's part of the stigma we need to be coming over because...
I can fix that, and anything else that you all would like fixed?
One of the things I did was, we are, we have, from the provider advisory group, we have, we discussed this yesterday, we're encouraging the providers to contact their legislators with their own numbers, so individual statements will be effective in addition to the number of staff. RHA has, we've already actually sent a letter that was circulating to our COO today, we penned it with some of the numbers. I had planned to do some bullet points to, you know, just to, some talking points to get back out to the providers, particularly in the I D D Subcommittee, so that they could use those then in their own letters to their legislators. And so we're trying at least to mobilize the provider community in the Vaya area to react and respond to the legislators with their own provider experiences. We kind of, we talked about doing a letter of support, maybe for, you know, from the PAC for Vaya, but I think it would have more impact to get a letter from all the providers, every single provider is opposed to one letter from the PAC. So we're trying to approach it that way. And Brian, I'd be glad to share that information with you tomorrow. I had planned to send it to Donald anyway tomorrow to see if he can put on before we start sending them off. So one of the things in there, one of the bullet points in there also talks about the NCO's fund balances and how, you know, how, you know, you just don't have all the access to that money, and some of it's descriptive. And so I wanted to be sure the wording on that was correct before we sent the letter off, but I wanted to follow back up with Donald tomorrow on that letter. Now, we're trying to at least mobilize the providers in the area to respond and react to the customer being proposed in a federal.
Who could give us a little?
Brian, can I add, you may have already talked about this, and you may, or you may be going to talk about this in a minute, but my sense of where they are today is they're moving off pretty quick. And time, time sort of obesens, I would suggest a few calls to Josh Thompson, who's the chair of the HHS Appropriations Committee, is scheduled tomorrow if possible to get moving on this. They're balancing their numbers up here next day or so, I think, at least the first cut. I don't think it's all over, but I think that they're trying to get to a first cut pretty quick and report back to the big appropriations committee chairs in the next, probably about tomorrow.
And Peyton, you don't have much?
I think Ben's here.
You don't have much hope of the House ringing and sending it in on this budget?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Do you have much hope that in conference, they'll, this will be better or worse?
I think that if we, if we don't get it in the House, it doesn't usually get better at Congress.
You know, one of the questions, that was an important question, you know, we hope and we really want you as a board to pass this resolution tonight, but we also are working with other NCOs to try to communicate with our General Assembly in a way that's very united. And we have in the packet, and of course, we can make it available electronically, a resolution that we would ask for you as boards of county commissions to pass. The question I would have, because I think Peyton's right, we've got a window, a short window, to really get to the House and some of those folks and really start making some noise. What would you all think as far as the turnaround time? Because for this kind of resolution, it would have to come before you at your next board meeting, am I correct, for discussion and review? So, and we can help facilitate that, we can make sure you have talking points, we can all try to be there to give you information. But what are you thinking as far as if your county is willing to do it, what the time take will be?
For Jackson County, we don't have another meeting, an official meeting to the 5th of June.
Because of budget.
Same thing with Watauga too, Tuesday, we just finished our Tuesday.
So, you know, just to make it really more expedient, and again, in the law, you know, you, this group is the representative body from your counties to us. I mean, that's exactly what it was invented for. So the, I mean, the venue, sure, would it be great to get, you know, individual resolutions from all the counties? Yeah. But honestly, I think this is almost as good and would serve the, it would provide a very big message.
Well, after we pass the resolution tonight, is there someone who could give us a list of who the key players are?
Yes.
So that we can start making contacts?
Yes.
About this? Whoever, whether it's House, Senate?
Yeah.
The HHS, any of those folks?
What we'll do is send that out, be an email tomorrow to each of you, and we'll do the same thing for you, Jeannie for the advisory group, and just kind of indicate who it is, the email address, and the telephone number. And I'll tell you what, it's, this is surprisingly simple on some level. When legislators get calls, it makes a difference. It makes a difference. They start to pay attention to that. And it's easy to pick up the phone and make a call and send an email.
Has the association, are they tuned into this?
Well, and I really was hoping that Ronnie would be here tonight. I, boy, I really wish they would.
Okay.
And again, I haven't had any direct contact, I've kind of used Ronnie to be the bridge to that, and maybe by the time of our board meeting Thursday night, we could know more about that. But again, what I would do, or Billy, you could do, you know, we execute this tonight, you send it up there to them. And to all the, you know, all the big chairs and the HHS chairs, just you let them know you're, you care about it.
So what we did tonight is some, it's commissioner to make a motion and move forward with the resolution?
And I, unless, do I hear anybody that's going to have a problem with this resolution? I want to address it because if we can send it unanimously, I think that would help too, to show that we're unanimous in the support for this. And this is not an partisan issue, but this is about mental health in our state.
My only, my only concern is that this is not something, this specific issue is not something that I've discussed with other members of my board. I can't come up here and vote for a resolution that appears that I'm saying that I have unanimous support from my board for the position I'm taking as a member of this advisory committee. So we need to make sure that the language is different between the two resolutions so that the resolution that comes out from the counties is more, more clearly indicates the support of the Board of County Commissioners. I know any commissioner learns after a few years that they don't speak up for the other county commissioners without some implied consent.
Yeah.
And we don't have that based on the fact that I've just seen the resolution.
Me too, yes.
And, you know, you might get a commissioner that's, that has spoken with, say, our senator Randall, and, you know, say she's for this. So, you know, they're sensitive to the fact that you don't want to be on opposing sides of the issue that your senator is strongly in favor of or against. And it works the same with the County Commissioners Association, believe me. I ran the Legislative Goals Conference for two years, including Medicaid expansion and all the, all the, you know, intricacies of that. So I'm for the resolution. As a member of this advisory board, I don't want it to reflect that the entire board that I am a member of...
But that's why you can take the county one to your board, and they can just...
Right. And I'm sure, I feel certain they would support it, but it's two different animals.
Well, I mean, they can change the county one if they want to, and you'll see whose different county commissioners will have their chance to be voting for it or against it at that point.
If it would make you feel more comfortable in the resolution sentence where it says, now therefore be it resolved, you can add the word the members of, so it would read, now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Vaya Health County Commissioner Advisory Board do hereby request. So it's very clear that it's just a membership of this advisory board.
And to your point, the county-specific resolution is explicitly different.
Yeah, yeah, I've read both of them. But, you know, I just want to make that clear that we're...
If we touch it up like that, you're good?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm going to vote for it whether you touch it up or not.
The other information I think would help us is to see how each county, what help, I mean, counties, not every county realizes what money they're getting, 2.9 million dollars, you know, in Wilkes. And that's not the amount you're paying in out of your county budget. So this is a, something I find is, helps the argument that this money's being spent in our county and we are getting these services in our county, and it's not some other place that's getting the services we should be getting, so.
Yeah, I just, you know, like I said, I just don't know what position all of them have taken on this because I've never, I've not seen it before, so.
Well, any more discussion, or do we have a motion to adopt this resolution from this board?
I'll make the motion with the changes that we talked about, if we approve this resolution.
All right, do we have a second?
One second.
All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, ayes had it. Thank you all. I think that'll help, and you can change that substance abuse to use too as well in there.
So just for follow-up on this, we will make the modifications, we will sign it on behalf. We are going to then send all of you as our County Commissioner Advisory Board members the list of this, a draft of this, or not a draft, the final copy of this, so that everyone has it along with people that we are asking you to contact, and you will share that with your other board members to ask them if they will support this effort. We are then going to also send talking points into county specific to see, and we will work to see about getting those as quickly as possible. But the main thing is if we have this resolution, that resolution in process from the counties, and for you to have some talking points so that you can be contacting these folks, it would be really helpful. I can tell you as a, you know, and Brian Shuping would probably, and Sarah's relatively newer, but it was one of going out and talking to all of you about the community reinvestment plan over the last several years and being so... plan over the last several years and being so excited about we as a public managed care organization, what we're going to be able to do with those cost savings, has probably been one of the highlights of the time I've been with VIA and being able to promote such growth and positive expansion. And then over the last two years, as these funding reductions has made it harder and harder, harder, and, you know, it's just very disheartening. So, we really need your help. They expect Brian to be at their door saying, you know, "Darn, you don't cut our funds." But this isn't about VIA, it's about people that are in our communities that we live with that really won't be getting the things that they need. So, thank you so much for your help, and we'll make sure, we'll make it as easy as possible for you to advocate on our behalf. And Sarah and Brian, I will follow up with you in your counties to see how we can support and facilitate the resolution as well as just coming to do a presentation.
And Gary, to your point, I understand you don't want to alienate your Senator, your House Representative, and we're all, we're just arms of the state, so we're just part of the process, and it's, it's perfectly legit, in my opinion, for us to be advocating to the people that we are on the same side or not on the same side of politically. This, this is a nonpartisan issue to me. This is public health and how we're going to deal with it, so. But I appreciate you.
Are there next steps, concerns, things?
You know, we'll, I mean, you're reading, reading the paper, the status of the budget, and again, there, as Peyton said, and I, and I did mention that earlier, Peyton, the pace, either going to try to go really fast and give something to the governor by June 15th, or they will or want not, is another question, but certainly we don't want, we don't want to sit around and waste any time, so. So, Billy and Peyton and Jeannie, thank you very much for your help this evening, and keep fighting, all right?
Anytime, thank you.
All right.
Goodnight.
Bye-bye.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Tracy just brought me a, a copy that's fixed with the changes we want already, so that's the copy I'll be signing tonight as the Chair of the Board. And I do appreciate all of y'all being involved in this. It's, it's our world, and I know we're all here for, to make it better, so, thank you all.
Connie had a question.
Yes. Commissioner Logan mentioned that when you send out the message to us, the information that you're going to send as soon as possible, would it be feasible to let us know how much money comes into our individual counties? I don't know if you could click on that or what kind of process that would be.
Well, I wish we could click on that.
But there's sometimes it's multiple providers in your county, and they're going over county lines, because that was just RHA's number that they were giving there, that...
To Wilks County.
Mm-hmm. That was just RHA, not the other services that are provided by other agencies. We've got, what, over 400 providers?
Yeah, I mean, we did that a couple of years ago where we really tried to dig down in and look at, when you combine Medicaid and state and county funds in each of your counties, and it's, I don't know, I could explain why that's so hard to do, but if you could trust me, it's, it's really a very difficult exercise.
And part of it, Connie, is your comprehensive providers, and in our region, we have two that we fund, Meridian. We give them one large pool of money for services that they spread across the area they serve, and they, they have, as providers, have the budgets for their county, but, but know as well and know, I mean, it's a very significant amount of money.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you, you know, when you consider the counties, they have no chair of Medicaid, and you get an enormous amount of Medicaid revenue that's associated with payment for the folks in your county, I mean, you're, you're leveraging multiples with, you know, if you want to think about it that way.
Well, we try not to bring that up unless there's still some hard feelings that, in the legislature and that whole negotiation says. Say a county like Wilks got, just, I don't even know what the number might be, but say we got $10 million. What percentage of reduction would we anticipate in the next budget if this, I mean, is it 10%? Is it 20%? I know services are going to be reduced, but I, so you have no idea what the hard number or some kind of percentage?
I can tell you the big numbers. You know, again, this year, recurring is 1.7 million, non-recurring is 3.4 million. I say this year. By that, I'm 17, 18, okay? And then 18, 19, recurring is 3.1, and non-recurring is 3.5, plus the intergovernmental transfer amounts that's just under 5 million. So, it's, it's, it's real money, let's put it that way. It's, it's, it's real money. And the problem with this is in some cases, you know, and this is, you know, blunt, you asked me a question, I'm always going to give you an answer. It'd be better to close programs completely in some cases than to try to just damage all of it.
Spread all evenly across every program.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And it's a terrible thing you do. And we're, we're not, we're not there yet.
I don't want to belabor things, but I'm anticipating when I called Senator Randall and I said, "We need this funding restored." Why is she going to tell me that we shouldn't have that funding restored?
She's going to tell you that we've got...
So that I know my next answer for my next question.
That we've got an enormous fund balance, and that we're paying, look at the cardinal salaries of a million dollars. We don't have an enormous fund balance. We've spent our money on reinvestment projects, and we can go through that in excruciating detail. But you have to really want to understand and learn to, to get there. It's, it's not a simple soundbite.
No.
And we've been damaged by the soundbites of representatives saying, "Oh, they've got a billion dollars." Well, we don't have a billion dollars, okay? So, that's, it's pretty much rhetoric, pretty much rhetoric, and that we can afford it and it isn't going to really hurt anything, and et cetera, et cetera.
Well, you know, in all areas of funding, that you've got a big fund balance argument's getting old. We've, we've heard it for, it's been used for several bienniums now, and, you know, we've all heard it, we're all tired of hearing it, and so...
And it's actually incorrect in our case.
Yeah, there is no...
So, other than that, it's a great argument.
Yeah.
And Brian, just lastly, before you came in, Christina was sharing with folks the information about the Medicaid reform listening sessions and how the state is moving us forward much more quickly as the state looking at Medicaid reform. So, I think just two to remember that as we look at what we have in fund balance, we have the existing services and things that we tried to implement in the last several years, but also what's needed to make such a major shift in our system to prepare for the future and the cost of that.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's a lot like what we went through, and again, I, you know, however long any of you have been around, going live on the VC waiver, you know, several years ago, the transformation that we're facing in terms of how we're going to have to change as an organization are every bit as significant as, as that transformation. And of course, we have to use our own funds to manage that change and create a different type of infrastructure and, and, you know, do all kinds of things that at the end of the day cost money. And again, this, I guess you could understand how when somebody takes that funding away or makes them use it for other things, it really handicaps your ability to, you know, take what we're doing and evolve it, so.
Well, it's frustrating because the savings VIA has made by being efficient on a lot of programs, to taking that money to turn into these innovative programs and try new things and see what we can do, and that, that's being taken away. So, then that's, that's what frustrates me the most is that I'm only, I'm the Chair of the Quality and Performance Committee, and we've been non-stop upgrading our quality, our, I mean, our problems have been fixed and we're, we're on it, and it's, we've got one of the best records in the state, and, and we're getting punished for it because we've got money to put into innovative programs.
And what are they going to do with that money they take away?
Well, you're asking, I'm not saying you're going to answer that one, Brian.
He isn't going to go to services, he goes off the table. That's the point. If I have any questions on the handouts, that's how you were looking, I think we're going to be sending probably some additional information and talking points, but if you have any questions about the handouts in your packet, let us know.
Anything else anybody want to bring up?
Uh, yeah, while we're on it, I was going to ask, I saw it on the agenda, the DSS bill that's on the floor, or it was, snuck into the Senate budget there. What updates do you have on that? How do you think the House feels about it?
You know, one of the lessons I've learned when I go and speak to legislators, if you have maybe at most three things you can talk about, and it, you know, with all due respect to that, I know it's a big deal for DSSs, that's not in my top three. And I haven't been asked about it, and, and right now, they're just so focused on the budget that I haven't heard anybody talking about it. But it'll be, it'll be important. It's, it's a big one, it's important.
I just know a lot of times when things get wrapped up statewide like that, it's the smaller rural counties that seem to get the short end of it, and I think that's most of us.
You're right.
Most of us.
You're not one of them, sorry.
But that's, aren't they shifting from local to regional DSS and state funding?
They are, but I know, I don't know how many of, this group says, some of the consolidated, it could completely tear apart the models they've been putting together for a couple of years now, and they've kind of just haven't really touched on that at all. The Senate just kind of didn't really have an opinion on it.
The missing, you said state funded, that is not part of it. Switch to regional, take your money with it.
Right.
We're still paying in.
So, it's, it's, to avoid, most of the systems, if you look at around the country, most of the systems are state-run systems, not county-run systems, there's very few county-run systems. But they really don't want to say, "We're going to go to a state-run system because we think there are issues," because they don't want to fund it.
So, pay close attention.
Pay close attention, and you know, there are a lot of wonderful practice models. You're sitting in a town that is very innovative in social services practice. If you look at their new family, if you haven't looked at their new Family Justice Center and you're interested in how services are delivery, delivered, you need to, because they have a very innovative whole look at the person, they have the medical, the law enforcement, the psychological, all-in-one facility. People come into something that looks like a living room to get interviewed, and it's the same struggle, the innovative practice is likely to go by the wayside.
So, I'd advocate to your representatives, and hopefully they'll hear the counties and the, the people who were elected at a local level as opposed to a state level. I think we're much closer to the people. We walk out of our office and meetings every day, we're seeing the people that we just made decisions for, so I think that's a big part of it.
It, it would be better, the study part, there are a lot of good things in that bill that say, "Let's pay attention, let's study," but there appears to be the foregone conclusion, that's the issue I have. Rather than say, "Let's find best practice and implement it," they say, "This is best practice."
And it is worrisome for those counties that do have successful innovative programs to deal with that DSS issue, so. You have enough? Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
A little bit.
About a second? Gary, all in favor? Thank you all for coming out and look forward to working with y'all in the future, and if you've got anything I can do, feel free to call me. Thank you.